Commission meeting for October the 28th. Please stand as Supervisor Davis will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Shoemaker and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you provided for us. And Father, as we go into this business of the county, we just ask that everything we say and do will be pleasing to you tonight. Father God, I just ask you that you be with my father in the morning when he has surgery on his back. Father, just be with us as we go through that and be with us through the rest of this meeting. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Davidson, Commissioner Shoemaker. Before we do establish a quorum, Pete has contacted me this morning. He's ill, would like to participate by phone. And what I'm asking the commission if that's all right? If so, I need a motion to allow him to do that in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Then we just gonna raise hands or? I'm sorry. Raise hands, okay. All in favor then raise your right hand. All right, let the record show that was unanimous. Pete, you're in. Pete, you there?
Yeah, thank you so much and I apologize for the inconvenience.
Hold just a minute Pete, your volume is down. Try again now Pete.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, very good, yes.
Okay, well, thank you and I apologize for the inconvenience.
Oh, that's fine. Everybody gets ill, so no problem with that at all. That will then bring us seven of eight for quorum, so we do have a quorum. Approval of agenda, excuse me. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
There's no change. The only thing that I would notate is that I have made an error under the case number for Daniel Fisher. It should be twenty-four dash S U P three four nine.
Okay, that's in Daniel Fisher's correct.
That is Daniel Fisher.
Okay, all right, duly noted. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that minor change?
Emoved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Pete, what is your vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous then. That brings us to our September 23rd, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion approved as presented or does someone have a change? Okay, no changes. Do I have a motion then as presented?
Motion to present. Second.
All right. Pete, we have a motion and a second to approve the 24, September 23rd regular meeting minutes. Do you have any issues?
None whatsoever. In fact, I vote in favor of that.
All right, I take it your vote is yes.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the commission. All right, that passes unanimously. That brings us to our public comment period. Nikki, do you have anyone signed up for the public comment period?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone signed up for public comment.
Okay, we'll bypass that and move straight on into our whole business, which is the public hearing for Daniel Fisher's.
Yes, sir. This case is twenty-four S U P three forty-nine. Daniel Fisher is our applicant and the property on which the request is being made is Tax Map one fifty-one parcel fifteen. This parcel in its entirety includes just over forty-one and a half acres. The project that Mr. Fisher is applying for will be located on the, on a portion of the property as indicated in his site plan and narrative. This is all in the Kurtsville district located near one eight three four zero East James Anderson Highway. It is an A1 zoning district and his request is to construct and operate a building supply store. Mr. Fisher is out of town, but he is able to join us virtually this evening to address questions and concerns that the planning commission and the general public may have.
Okay, thank you Nikki. Before I open up the public hearing, do any of the commissioners have anything they would like to ask at this time to the applicant? Pete, do you have a question you want to, now or wait until?
The only question I have is the same one I had last time. Now that, I know Daniel Fisher does not own that property, does that create, I mean, if we push this thing forward, does it present a problem?
As far as the ownership?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, as my understanding, he's under contract, so I don't think that would be an issue because he would have to close on before his issued a building permit.
Okay, all right, then, so I'm fine.
Okay, very good, all right. Now, do all the commissioners have any question? Nikki, do we have anyone sign up for the public hearing?
I do have someone sign up for the public hearing and while you're having discussion, if I could just interject, in the narrative, Mr. Fisher has indicated that he wanted to construct this structure on a one acre parcel of the property.
Okay.
This is still an A1 zoning. This is not B1. The board supervisors has indicated that in an A1 zoning district, a two acre parcel with two hundred feet of road frontage is what would be needed for a new lot. So if that is not going to be the case, just, I would say to just remember that when you are assigning conditions.
Okay, so in his, in his application, he asked for one acre, not two acres?
Yes, sir.
What you're saying, okay. So what we can do is make that one of the conditions that has to be, meet the zoning requirements, which would be two acres. Okay, all right. No questions from the commissioners, I'll, have anybody signed up, you said?
We do. Mr. I P. Davis.
Okay. I'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Davis, if you'd come forward and state your full name and address, sir.
I'm Price Davis Jr. and I'm here representing Whetstone Farm Davis Properties LLC. I live at one oh six Whetstone Lane in Dillon, Virginia. Ms. Shoemaker in District Two is my representative. I was here in support of this project by Mr. Fisher. He's discussed this with me in detail and in reviewing all of it, I think he's got a good business plan and I think it's something that would be good for the community and my family felt it would be something that's needed and it would be an asset to everybody. So we support it.
Thank you, sir. If that's all the speakers, all right, I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to the commission. At this time, does the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Is he gonna be able to purchase the two acres of, on the property to do what he needs to do to be?
Excuse me Supervisor Davis, we could ask him that this evening if he'd like. We've got him able to speak directly with you to address that.
I think that's a valid question to say, ask him. You say he can, okay.
Yeah, my question is, is Mr. Fisher, would you be able to purchase two acres to be able to go along with the zoning to build on it?
Well, it would be a total of four acres, am I correct on that?
Four acres?
The total parcel that I would be buying would be four acres and would be currently moving dirt on one acre of that four acres.
Okay, that's satisfies me.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get, what was the question?
Okay, that resolves that issue then, as far as acres wise. Any more questions from the commissioners at this time? Pete, do you have any additional questions, sir?
No, I think he answered it. He's got four acres, so I guess, you know, given the code, you know, he's, you know, he's got what he needs in order to put that store up.
Okay, very good. All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I would make a motion that we go ahead and send this to the board supervisors.
Okay, have a motion to have?
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, do we caveat that, knowing that he's actually got a contract for four acres? I think that might be resolved or at least addressed in the conditions, Nikki.
Mr. Chairman, duly noted.
With that caveat, do we have any further discussion? All right, Pete, what's your vote, sir?
I vote we move it to the board.
Okay, all right, the rest of us, raise your right hand. That does pass you now, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fisher, if you can hear me, sir. Uh-oh, do we lose him?
Daniel, the board of supervisors meeting will be on Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
He is there, okay, very good. Okay, Nikki, that brings us to a new business, which is the introduction of S U P three fifty, Stephanie Marshall.
Yes, sir. Our applicants are Stephanie and Shane Marshall. The property on which the permit is being requested is Tax Map eight parcel fourteen. It's fifty-six point five seven acres and it's located at three three two three Exdale Road, Scottsville. It is in the James River Magisterial District, Zoned A1. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing and operating a country store, retail store, and event center. Events to include but not limited to cooking classes, children's educational classes, micro weddings, agritours, themed evenings with wineries, distillers and breweries, adult presentations, food trucks, cattle industry seminars and tours, wagyu association meetings, vendor partnerships, and monthly meet and greet, community networking opportunities. The applicants are asking the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request. Ms. Marshall is in the audience and prepared to answer questions that you may have this evening.
Thank you, Nikki. Ms. Marshall, if you would, would you come forward to the podium, state's full name, address, and if you would, just give us a quick overview narrative of your application, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. Stephanie Marshall, address is thirty-three twenty-three Exdale Road, Scottsville, two four five nine zero. The purpose of the special use permit is to build a store, more so an event center as Nikki stated, and I would, we raise American Wagyu cattle and Black Angus and we would like to do agritours and educate the public on those practices and I'd like to do cooking classes. I don't want to limit it to, we'd also like to do special events, so I'm trying not to limit it because I don't know how big this might get. I'm kind of hoping it gets bigger than I think.
Just a couple of quick questions while I turn it over to the commissioners, for me. As far as your events, do you have any approximate number you think you'll have annually?
Actually, I mean, I think that's going to probably be determinant of each event. Some of the events are probably going to be larger than others, so, I mean, as far as putting a head count, I don't know that I really can put a head count on those particular events. There may be fifty people that are going to, you know, attend the Wagyu Association meetings and tastings. There might be twenty people that might come to the cooking classes or the educational, the children's educational classes. I hope those are larger. You know, eventually, I think I would like to invite, you know, classes from the different elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools to come to the farm and actually, you know, participate in, and see maybe some of the artificial insemination and some of the other things that we do to the cattle. So I'm not really sure that I can answer like a definite number of people that would attend those events.
Right. You have added a parking area, I saw on the, saying you have already designated a parking area plus an extra one.
Yes, sir. The representative from VDOT came out and took a look at everything and we also have overflow parking in some of the fields that we can rope off and we can also use, you know, that as overflow parking if the parking near the store and the event center are, you know, full.
Okay, that's all the questions I have at this time. I will now turn it over to the commissioners. Joyce, you look like, you have a question? Or you don't?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
I have something, okay.
You had that look on your face.
Yes, I just want to know what a micro wedding is and what is an adult presentation?
So adult presentations are basically when we ask speakers to come that are, that maybe have something to do with agriculture. We had several different speakers at a convention that we went to in Williamsburg that were really interesting. They were selling different types of mineral. So educational classes on agriculture and the things that you can do with those. We had several speakers, I think, that were at the Buckingham County Cattlemen's Association meeting that I would like to invite back because a lot of people had a lot more questions. So as far as the question for adult presentations, that's kind of what I'm gearing that towards.
So their educational presentations?
Yes, ma'am.
Would this still apply to if there were like the future farmers?
Yes.
They could also come, but they're high school students. So it's just educational presentations?
Yes.
Not something that only an adult could hear?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess I probably should have, even though I did children's educational classes, I also added adult, I should have said adult educational classes as well.
And a micro wedding?
So a micro wedding is actually, they are taking off all over the country. They're very small weddings that basically involve just the family members and they typically have a food truck. They bring a photographer and everything with them. I've seen them, my son actually got married out in Colorado under the micro wedding and I just thought it was, it's a neat little way for people to get married that don't have large families and they bring everything basically to the event center.
They'll need a number, though. We need a number.
As far as attendees?
Attendees, yeah, the number of people allowed on the.
I agree because we put a number restriction on everybody else.
Right, yeah. So I guess what we would ask you to do is try to come up with a maximum that you think would you have for any of your festivals?
Okay.
Is that something you could do off the top of your head or do you need some more time, Ms. Marshall?
I mean, I think I probably would like to discuss it with Shane.
Okay.
And, you know, I have an answer for you, I guess, in the next day or so.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just like to discuss it with him. He knows, you know, how much land we can allot parking, more than I do, so I think I'd just like to ask him.
Very good.
Some of the others, we've two hundred and fifty or something like that, I mean, what was?
Yeah, the last one, the Hobbit House, I think, what was it, one fifty and seventy?
Right, but they, they didn't have ample parking.
They didn't have the parking that the marshals have, I know that from seeing the inspector in the site.
What was Nikki, number Nikki, when they had to notify the sheriff's department and stuff, was it two hundred and fifty?
That case was a little bit different. That was Mr. Burmaster and he was having the musical, the music festivals, but you are correct, it did, it was two fifty or three hundred and I apologize for not knowing the number off the top of my head, but.
Think you would ever have that many people, I mean?
I would hope so at some point in time.
I mean, we need to, we need a number. I just think we need a.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would make sense to try to go back and, you know, figure what you can live with and what you think it would actually.
Open ended, then we're.
And I, and I agree. I do agree with that. I mean, I, you know, I wouldn't expect ten thousand people to descend upon Exdale Road, but yes, I do agree with you. I just, I would like to talk to Shane to find out, you know, how much parking we actually do have. If, you know, if we have ample parking for three hundred people, then I, you know, I'd be able to give you that number or if there's ample parking for five hundred, then I would like to be able to give you that number.
Joyce, you have more questions?
I have another question. I'm looking at the educational classes and would that number apply to students, schools, like if a school came out? Because I would expect students to be small classes as opposed to a wedding. And how many people, have you hosted a cattlemen's?
A cattlemen's association meeting? We, there's typically fifty to seventy people at the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association that's hosted, they're hosted at the barn.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at Chip, if he had a number, how many people showed up at the cattlemen's association, he's like, don't ask me.
We paid them.
Yeah, well, you paid, I know, but I just can't remember what the number was.
They also have a couple of hundred, like.
There is a couple of hundred that would show up, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We've had in the past cases that were presented to the planning commission and ultimately to the board, the Jessica Nicholas case was a little bit of a rarity because that number had been decreased to two fifty, three hundred. In the past, they have been fifteen hundred up to forty-five hundred for attendees and the maximum number of events have gone from four to eight, maybe, off the top of my head, so.
Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Instead of slowing the process up with her, could we, if she get back to us in the next day or two with an answer and we just move this forward to a public hearing and number, I mean, we.
That was gonna be my suggestion, not to hold the application up if we want to move it forward to public hearing.
Then she has time to come up with a number for us before I know.
Right. The most important thing is to have that to get to Nikki, so it's advertised when we go to public hearing, but she can email us the number. So what would be the, you would have to have it, that number before we advertise, if we move this to public hearing?
I need it immediately because I'm gonna need to send the advertisement in by this Friday because.
Oh, this Friday? Okay.
Need to be advertised the sixth and the thirteenth because the next meeting, should you move this forward?
That's correct.
Would be November eighteenth. We're one week earlier by combining our planning commission and our regular meeting.
So Ms. Marshall, if there's any way possible, you can get a figure to Nikki?
Yes.
By before Friday, so we can get it in the advertisement. And she'll, she'll then relay it to all of the commissioners here.
Yes, sir. I will.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
I noticed that it's, the road is in between two parcels. Which side will you be using for the main operation? I know it's, the road runs right between.
Yes, sir, it does. So if you are, if you are, when you make a left-hand turn onto Exdale Road, if you're coming down Exdale Road, it'll be on the right-hand side.
From twenty.
From twenty, yes.
So which side? That's okay.
It's the north end of the property.
There used to, there used to be a double wide that was sitting there that we tore down, so it's, it's on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side is where the cattle, it's fenced in for the cattle, on the left-hand side of the property.
So it'll be on the, if I'm coming from Exdale, Exdale Road from six oh two, it'll be on the right?
Yes.
Okay.
From not from?
No, no, on the left.
On the left.
I guess, I'm sorry.
Where the house was.
Yes, I'm horrible with directions.
Okay, I got you.
So, yeah, on the left-hand side. If you're coming from the other direction, it's on the right-hand side, yes, sir.
I knew the gentleman that lived there before.
I'm sorry?
I knew the gentleman that used to live.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, that's who we purchased the property from, yeah, Dick and Moni Bishop.
Yeah, so you'll be on the left side where all, that'll be mostly maybe parking on the right side.
Yes, and then we're also gonna use, you know, overflow parking on, you know, up and down, you know, where Exdale Road is located because we do own most of that that goes up to the church there.
I saw where you were cleaning out up there recently.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're trying to make it look nice.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Pete, I was just getting ready to go to you. Go ahead.
Well, you know, I made the loop, I think it, is it Big Island Road goes into Exdale Lane? I came off fifteen and I went all the way to sixty. And I, you know, the area is pretty wide open. I can understand why she would have all these events, but my question is, is there, and I didn't hear this clearly, is there gonna be a limit to the number of events or a suggested limit to the number of events for a year that we're gonna ask, ask the owners to sort of limit themselves to in this particular case or is this kind of an open-ended thing?
Well, Pete, my suggestion is to wait and see what the maximum number that Mrs. Marshall comes back with for her events and then we can look at if we need to reduce or set a goal or a number of events. I think it would be based on the number of people that would be coming to the events. If it's gonna be a small number and they can accommodate it to parking, then I don't know that it's that much of an issue because they've got plenty of parking. But if it is a situation where they might have a large number, then yes, sir, we may need to look at limiting that or at least considering it. But I think until we know her number of parking and estimated people maximum for each of her events, I think we probably just hold off until that point.
Okay, the only other question I'd ask, excuse me, I'd ask Ms. Marshall, it's an interesting situation. I think the nearest country store to you is the Glenmore Store. The question I would ask, and this is just a business question, it really has, I mean, I'm all in favor of moving this thing forward to a public hearing, but the question is, how do you intend to market, it's a retail store, so how do you intend to market the area? What do you intend to retail? Are you intending at all to butcher wagyu cap, cattle in that area or are you gonna sell your meat or what, what do you intend to sell there?
So we, we intend to sell our beef, our Black Angus and our American Wagyu. I sell at farmer's markets, so I have to take the animals to a USDA-approved facility. That facility is Blue Ridge Meats, which is in Middletown, Virginia, so there will not be any slaughtering or anything of that sort. The meat, when we pick it up, it's packaged. I plan on having freezers with glass doors in the store and that's where we plan on selling the meat. Also, I'd like to try to maybe sell some other vendors local honey or maybe some other, you know, products that local people have that, you know, they might be willing to put in the store as well. So as far as a general store where, or a country store where you could pick up a pack of nabs and a Coke, that's, that's really not what I'm going for. It's more of a specialty shop.
Okay, so the question I would ask, I guess, to Nikki, I don't, I don't know what is or is, is in or outside of our purview, but do, do the conditions, because she wants to sell the meat in this store, do the conditions have to include something that, that implies there's some sort of a regulatory approval for that or is that necessary?
I'll go back to that first condition, Mr. Kaposzynski, local, state, and federal guidelines, so she will not have an abattoir, she will not be processing the meat specifically there, she's dealing with the USDA. If you do that, that particular office, Blue Ridge Meats, I believe is what it was referred to, referred to, will have to package. will have to package and stamp that meat accordingly. And then, of course, her, Ms. Marshall's structure building will need to be inspected to ensure that she can sell at that location. So she is going to adhere to the state and federal guidelines for the, the sell of, of those meat and meat byproducts.
I guess to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess to answer your questions, I mean, I currently sell our beef at farmer's markets. And in order for me to sell that beef, it has to be labeled, it has to be processed at a USDA facility. And that facility is Blue Ridge Meats and Front Royal. So it's packaged. It has, it has their address and their stamp on it, their USDA stamp on it. It has our farm, the name of the farm, and then actually what the cut of beef actually is.
So you establish a chain of custody from it, from them to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you for the answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pete, is that all your questions, sir?
Yeah, that's it. I'm ready to listen to a motion.
Okay, well, one quick question for you, Mrs. Marshall.
Yes, sir.
Your store, will it be open all the time or just at the time of your scheduled events?
Shane and I have talked about it. I think initially, we're probably just going to have it open maybe Fridays and Saturdays until we know what sort of.
Response, yeah.
Response we're going to get. And then if, you know, if, if people would like it open during the week, we would probably hire someone to, you know, have the store open maybe from eight to five or, you know, something of that nature. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure what the hours will be just yet. But I would like it to be open during the weekends. And then possibly, you know, sometime during the week, if there's things going on, like, you know, people are going to pick up Christmas trees and there's a lot of traffic on that road or something, it might be a good idea to have it open at that time so that people know where we are.
Very good. That answers one of.
One other question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Pete.
Will there be signage for the store and where will it be located?
So we, Shane and I have also talked about that. I believe that the signage for the store will be actually just on the store. I don't, I don't anticipate us having some large sign by the road since there's gates and everything there at the beginning of the road. I don't, I don't want like a really large gaudy sign on the side of the road to, you know, for people to break their neck looking at it as they're going down that road. So the signage for the actual store will be on, on the store itself.
Oh, sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
We talked about how many people that would might, maybe coming in. But do we, do we know how many events that you will be having a year?
Oh, that I, that I don't know either. I, I mean, I, I would like to have as many events, you know, as, as I could and make those, you know, that they are manageable, which I know I need to come up with a number of people. But I don't really have a cap on how many events, you know, that we would have at this store monthly. And I'm not sure, you know, because I don't know if, you know, when, when I do approach the schools to find out if they're interested in coming for field trips and for agritours and that sort of thing. I don't want to say that I can only have five events and then turn away, you know, a, a field trip for kids or something like that, so.
I just thought we had something in the guideline for events and I just didn't know how many that you were going to have.
And I, and I guess events too, I mean, it's, or do events include the cooking classes? And do events include possibly having, you know, a, a monthly meeting there, you know, for the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association or the Wagyu Association? You know, I don't, do, do the, does that fall under events as well? Or are the events just like the tastings and having a food truck there? So I guess I don't know what constitutes an event.
I was thinking an event would be where you're going to have two-hundred-and-fifty people come in.
Okay.
That would be an event.
I see, okay.
That's what I was wondering because you only set up for so many a year.
Right, okay. I, I guess that's probably going to depend on the parking as well.
Right. I, I think it would be very beneficial for the commissioners as well as if it goes so on forward to the board of supervisors to just take your breakdown of the educational law that you've got listed.
Yes, sir.
And just give a, you know, approximate number maximum that you thought would attend those. And then if it's events that we need to break out, we will address them.
Like a larger event?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Do I have a motion to move this forward?
They're moved.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Pete, what is your vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, all the other commissioners, raise your right hand if you approve.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We will see you in November on.
November eighteenth, six o'clock, and hopefully we will talk tomorrow.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, Nikki, that brings us to your reports.
I don't have anything for you and I probably should have made this comment during the Marshall case, twenty-four SUP 350. I wanted to include, we did display the VDOT signed form by Brian Locker for the application. When you received this information and it was put on the website last week, we had an email. Mr. Locker was in training. He did follow up and complete that page of the application. So I wanted it to, everyone to be aware that the application was fully complete to move forward. So just a side note. Other than that, I don't.
Okay, very good. All right, that brings us to commissioner matters and concerns. Do any commissioners have anything they need to voice at this time?
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm not, I wasn't clear. What is the date for the next meeting?
November eighteenth.
Well, Pete, we're having a combined meeting because the regular scheduled meeting would be so close to Thanksgiving. So we're going to have the regular meeting first and then the, a short work session following.
Is that at six o'clock or five?
Six. Regular scheduled meeting will start at six o'clock. And soon as we finish that, we'll, we'll do our work session, we'll work overtime we have available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, after now, all the commissioners.
I have two questions.
Yes, go ahead, Joyce.
Did you find out any information on the place on Rock Island Road? Is it Rock Island Road? No.
It is, it is Rock Island. It's a, the treatment center, yes. The calls have been made.
White Rock.
White Rock.
White Rock, I'm sorry, close to Rock Island, just off of Route twenty. Yes, we have information and county administration, county attorney, we are working on a formal letter to address the activity and use at that particular location.
What is the facility?
The facility, as it was called into me as a zoning complaint, was a quote-unquote drug treatment halfway house for individuals. Now, please note that the property, as it was used, I can't remember the owner's name, but I can remember his face. It was used in the nineties and until it was sold just a few years ago as a bed and breakfast. And of course, a drug treatment center or halfway house does not meet the same grandfathered activity of bed and breakfast as I understand it. And if that were the case, then certain taxes would be paid to the commissioner of the revenue for that particular location. So there is a bit of an inquiry, investigation into what we can find. And there will be a follow-up with a, a formal letter.
One more question. What is being built beside the cottage? What's an education?
That is a solar farm. It's a.
That is a solar farm.
Approximately two megawatt. It was approved in.
No, I just couldn't.
It was known as N C N Properties. It was an IP, Impact Power Solutions Solar. It's now Summit Ridge. It's around twenty-five acres there. So this will be approximately a twelve-acre compound fenced in, but that.
Okay.
Twelve or fifteen in panel, if I think I recall. It's been a while.
There were two, there were two projects of similar size that went through. One was the Larry Davis Solar Project on Gravel Hill and the N C N property right there on Route twenty.
Okay, I remember the Larry Davis. I just didn't remember that one.
That's, that's what's happening.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's.
Two and a half years since it was.
I don't feel so bad.
Y'all have had a lot of cases in the last few years and it's hard to remember. And some of them take place as far as construction and moving dirt much quicker than others, so.
Very good. Any other commissioners? Pete, do you have anything?
No, no, I say, thank you again for allowing me to do this on the phone. I appreciate it. Sorry, sorry to the commissioners, really.
Well, that's, that's fine. I hope you get to feeling better.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm sure. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favors, raise your right hand. Pete, does that seem as unanimous with you?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. You have a good night. We adjourn.
Thank you.
Hey, Nikki, I saw the cops going back up and down the road today. I don't know.